Along those council meetings, but we're going to take item number two first since there's so many people who have very busy schedules, but also the first, the first item is, oh, I'm sorry, so we are on item number one. Okay, good. But we also wanted to cover what the agenda for this committee is, so let me just open by saying that last year this committee met, I believe, four times, and particularly with the economy and the state that it is, frankly, I don't understand why that happened. But I intend for this committee to be very aggressive, and that's in fact why we scheduled this meeting, a special meeting, for the first day when our first regular scheduled meeting is in a week. So we are going to hopefully set a different tone to focus on a broad array of issues. This meeting will primarily focus on what the purpose of the committee is and what the various jurisdictional elements are. Not a lot of controversy here, mainly just administrative stuff, but we have asked people to come into, make presentations because there's so much that has to be done quickly to help stimulate our economic environment. And I'm very, very excited at the opportunity to be on this committee. So with that, if I could ask the city clerk or the CLA, city clerk or the CLA-
Item number one is a discussion item. It's an overview of the scope, mission, and jurisdiction of the jobs and business development committee.
Okay, we've had a request from Catalina Breones, co-director of research for the Alliance, LA Alliance on New Economy, who has to leave at three. She's okay? Oh, she left? Oh, well, that explains the request. So we'll go back to panel number one. This is representatives from the business community, Mel Kohn from VICA, and Beverly Kenworthy, public policy manager from the LA Chamber of Commerce. Are they here? Yeah, please, step forward. Yeah. I was, I was, it's really interesting, my staff is pointing out that Flash Forward is filming downstairs in the rotunda. The funny thing is that as I was walking out, the fire inspector on the job is my ex-wife's brother, and so he and my daughter and I were having a conversation for about 30 seconds, I promise. But I think that is indicative of, of the impact of the film industry. But with that, let me ask Mel if you could, tell us what, what some of the objectives that you would like to see accomplished in this committee from VICA's perspective would be.
First, thank you for inviting VICA to this forum today. My name is Mel Kohn, and I'm representing the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. I'm a board member, and our topic today deals with Los Angeles City Business Tax. I'm a former president of the Business Tax Advisory Committee, which was in existence for five years, from 1999 to 2004. Historically, business tax has had a major impact on whether businesses remain in Los Angeles or whether they come to Los Angeles. Historically, business tax has been a tiebreaker. Any company, large or small, doing their due diligence is going to look at many factors: transportation, utilities, labor market, et cetera. But at the end of the day, the business tax historically has been the tiebreaker on whether they come or go elsewhere. I would like to express VICA's support for business tax reform, which we have talked about. The results of our previous business tax cuts have generated increased revenues to the city. For example, 1999 business tax revenues were 308 million. 2008 business tax revenues were 467 million, an increase of 160 million. Included that was $92 million of tax reforms. So it did make a difference of approximately a quarter of a billion dollars, the reforms that were enacted, and that we were very pleased about and supported it. We want to continue to build on the success to improve our LA business climate even more. We have demonstrated, and you have demonstrated, that even modest cuts can generate more tax, this $250 million. It also allowed the city to hire more police, prove city services, two priorities for employers, which we know historically that are very important to the business community. We believe that it's now time to have further tax cuts. As your past actions have demonstrated, this should be further to contribute to the city's economic prosperity. In our mind, there's no question that jobs will do this. Briefly, we have seven items that we would like to have you consider. The first one is reduce the gross receipts tax by another 25% over some period of time. The example we had was the methodology that in the last tax reform, which succeeded in reducing rates by 15%. If you reduced them by another 25%, basically you would arrive at a 40% decrease from when real reform started in 1999. We'd ask that you consider the city sales tax, there's a one cent sales tax on the sale of personal property. We'd like to have you consider reducing that to one half cent, just for a period of one year. The other item is really something that is in existence. There is a small business tax exemption. The city eliminated business tax on all businesses doing under $100,000. That reduced the number of taxpayers by 60%, and the cost was $22 million. It did a lot, basically, for the taxpayers and for the attitude of taxpayers, and also just for the efficiencies of the Office of Finance. My rule of thumb is 20% of the taxpayers pay 80%. I don't know what the percentage is today. The Office of Finance could tell us that, but it's a pretty steady rule for all taxing agencies. We'd like to have you consider extending the exemptions, but raise it to $250,000. We believe that'd be more of an incentive, and also, it'd just be more efficient in running the city. You wouldn't have paper-
The 22 million you referred to was-
That was the cost of the hundred, the 100,000 exemption-
Okay.
-when we were doing tax reform. So it costs-
But, but there's no way to calculate the benefit derived from that?
Well, the, it hasn't been done. I would say the Office of Finance would have that. Because remember, this was in 2004, I believe, or 2003. The other item is really an opportunity cost. We'd like you to consider raising the current 500,000 exemption to $4 million. And why? At the present time, if you don't bring a business in, you do not have the revenue. We believe that having a $4 million exemption will bring larger businesses, which means more employees, and we've also seen that there is a trickle-up theory. If a business comes in, even if they're not paying tax, they're using utilities, they're employing people, they're buying from local vendors. So there is a trickle-up, which we haven't been able to measure, but we know what happened. We know what happened with business tax reform, with the prior reform measures. So that is something we'd like to have you consider. As, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you mentioned the, a couple of figures-
Yeah.
-350 million, I think, and-
Yeah.
-you said-
Yeah, that is from the Controller's Report of March 1st.
Describe those figures for me again.
A Controller issues a report every March 1st on revenues in the city, and this is directly from their report.
We actually gained revenue?
Yep, we went from 308 million in 1999 to 467 million in 2008.
Okay, notwithstanding the fact we reduced the taxes?
Yes.
Okay, so theoretically, if we continue to reduce the taxes or eliminate the taxes, we could make a gajillion dollars. But at what point does that, that calculation break down and diminish returns?
That's what we have to work with the Office of Finance. And I also don't want to say it was just the rates. The Office of Finance did a wonderful job on compliance, and AB63 had a big part in that. But it just proved to us-
The amnesty periods also-
And we had an amnesty in the very beginning, but really ongoing. AB63 has provided terrific compliance. I mean, notices are now going out every month from the Office of Finance. And only because I'm a CPA, I see it with our clients.
Okay.
The other item we'd like to have you consider has to do with filming. At the present time, filming is not based on gross receipts, it's based on cost of production. Right now, there's a cap of approximately $12 million, and there's a rate. What we would like to recommend is the floor, which is $4 million, be raised to $8 million, which will allow for more low-budget films, which are employing people, and not to have a tax. We believe the additional business, or additional filming, would create more jobs and more tangible revenue across the board. As to, as to doing other things, we'd just like to chat about eliminating fees, excuse me, for enterprise zones. We also would like to talk about, which there's a motion by yourself and Councilman Garcetti regarding a new business tax advisory commission. Historically, Mayor Riordan had a very large tax reform proposal, very large study, and the only thing that survived that study was the initial Business Tax Advisory Committee. With your motion, we thank you because we think it's important. We also think it was important in that motion that the period of time for statute for this committee was 18 months, because that really forces something to happen rather than the five-and-a-half years of the prior committee. So we look forward to that happening, and we very, we just support it. And whatever VICA can do to help that provision go through and participate in it, which we are named as a business group, we want to thank you.
Well, I want to thank VICA for participating, but specifically, I want to thank you, Mel, for the work that you did on the previous advisory committee. A lot of the suggestions emanated from your ideas, and they benefited the city of Los Angeles. All of these things are, are on the table. All of these things will be considered, and, and hopefully, the level of understanding about all these things will move expeditiously, will obviously listen to the CAO and, and others who might fear the revenue stream would be cut off. But somewhere, there's a balance. I also think that, that there may be opportunities for piloting projects, just to let them, you know, let the line go out a little bit and see what catches, and then, and then if we, if we go too far, bring it back in a little bit. And I, I think there's some opportunities for doing things that aren't so fixed in the process. And I think that was the intent of the original advisory committee, and I want to maintain that, that posture. How quickly we do this stuff, who knows? But, but we're gonna, we're gonna at least meet, you know, 10 times more than last year's committee, so that'll give us, give us a better shot. But thank you so much.
And VICA thanks you, and we look forward to working with this committee to expedite business tax reform, too. Thank you.
It's going to happen. That much, I absolutely believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to my front page.
My name is Beverly Kenworthy. I'm a public policy manager with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. Both Gary and Sam send their regards, and they are both out of town, which is why I am here representing them.
Did they leave because I was having this hearing, or?
I don't think so. I think they were disappointed that they couldn't be here. First, we'd like to congratulate you for taking the reins of this committee, and that we really look forward to working with you to improve our business climate, create good-paying jobs, develop a much stronger economic development strategy for the city. And we really applaud your commitment for business tax reform and making it easier for job creators to interact with City Hall. My comments are going to be much more general because our Board of Directors is going to adopt an official, specific position on new tax reform next week, and which, of course, we will share with you. But to that end, I would like to say that Chamber absolutely supports the recreation of the Business Tax Advisory Committee. We hope that it's comprised of the best and the brightest in the city, and that the committee's work will be completed within that 12 to 18 months. Anything the Chamber can do to help that, you know, we're going to be on board. And we hope that the efforts extend beyond, you know, just narrow categories and lowering tax rates, that it's, it's broad. We'd also like to ensure a stronger customer program, service program at City Hall that values businesses and makes it easier to get the right answers. In many cases, a business will decide to locate in or leave Los Angeles based on their interaction with, with the city, and we know that that's happened. And that we continue to improve the access points for businesses at City Hall and take greater advantage of web-based services. Most of all, we're excited to explore the whole wealth of options to create a climate in which businesses continue to invest in our city and succeed in their respective industries and create jobs for the residents in our city.
Now, is there a focus of the Chamber? When I worked in the state legislature, the California Chamber of Commerce had some very large corporate partners that, and they sort of focused on large, extremely large businesses more than the tiniest businesses.
No, I think the Chamber has-
I mean, the rhetoric was there, but in reality, when you look at the legislation, it was primarily focused on large. Is there a similar kind of relationship with the smaller chambers of commerce?
I really knew the Chamber. I've really just been there for two months. But from what I've gained in these past two months is that we really do have an array of businesses from small business, I mean, we're looking at the small business impact on the, with the onsite sign ordinance, which is certainly affecting our members, but we also have members who are much larger and have different interests, so.
Well, I would like to extend to the Chamber that I wrote legislation which provided a definition for microenterprises in the state of California to be consistent with federal Small Business Administration language. By doing so, it opened up the opportunities for microenterprises, those with employees of five or less-
Sure.
-to compete for federal dollars that previously they were not able to compete with, because the small business was, you know, sometimes hundreds of employees. So I would like to see a microenterprise agenda emerge out of this committee, and I would like to work with the LA Chamber and the other chambers to, to drive that agenda. At the time I wrote that legislation, the, I know the figures by heart. 63% of the new businesses in California were, were microenterprises. The vast majority of micro, of new businesses created were microenterprises, creating 63% of the new jobs in California, but 90% of them failed within a year.
Sure.
And so-
Was this in the state of California?
Yes. The vast majority of those were women, the vast majority of those were immigrants, and we really have to capture that economics, because if we can make that more successful, it will, it will sustain many, many communities for many, many years. So that's an energy that, that I absolutely want to capture in this committee.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Panel number two was regarding poverty. One of the things that was added to this committee was the responsibility to develop the MASH plan to end poverty. And I enjoy that because as the chair of the ad hoc committee on poverty, this puts it in a standing committee, and it makes it more permanent, gives an opportunity to review it, and also not have to capture everything in one document all in the first, first go-around. We can always come back and modify it on an ongoing basis. So I'd like to ask Catalina Breones left, she's with Lain. Obviously, Lain has become somewhat of a player in, in job policy, and they are very much going to impact the issues of poverty, and I, I plan to work with them on, on some policy development as well. Marguerite Womack is the Director of Economic and Workforce Development for the United Way, and United Way produced a document with regard to poverty a couple of years ago, and that document has really, I think, provided an opportunity for people to better understand the issues of poverty faced in Los Angeles.
Thank you. And so you know, Councilmember, United Way is presently working to update our report on the Tale of Two Cities.
Uh huh.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for including the, our poverty lens on the area of jobs and as, jobs as a way is creating a pathway out of poverty. What I pass to you is our vision of what it takes to bring somebody out of poverty. And as you can see, workforce development jobs is certainly there, but it's one thing. So one good job is not necessarily sustainable to bring a family out of poverty if they don't know how to use their money, are not taking advantage of public benefits, and so on. So I wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about what United Way has done, and that is, we've brought together the workforce systems, your CDD, your Community Development Department, Workforce Investment Boards, education, including LAUSD, the community colleges, labor, the Chamber, and the LAEDC. We work together monthly to talk about how we can leverage each other's resources, how we can work towards grant funding that we can leverage together, how we can collaborate, and so on. So I really want to applaud your Community Development Department for their work on that committee, as well as your new family source vision. The CDD has recently gone out to bid and announced the winners, so to speak, of the new family source centers, where people can get information about how to get job training, so they're linked to your work source centers. They have opportunity to get their taxes done for free. Everything has financial education tied to it, and as you can see, again, that's really our vision. And so as United Way goes forward, and is going to open up a request for proposals in January, it's not by surprise or coincidence that we will be asking for some of the same things, again, leveraging the city's investments as well as those of our donors. The other thing that I'd like to tell you about is our Workforce Funder Collaborative that United Way has spearheaded here in Los Angeles. We brought together private foundations, corporate foundations, as well as public entities like EDD and the Community College District, to combine our funds, and we made strategic investments in three different areas, including construction, logistics, goods movement, and healthcare, as well as the new green jobs, the green jobs that are across all three of those. And together, we invested 1.2 million in our first year.
And what exactly was it for?
For job training programs, for people who are getting job training and directly placed into jobs. And one of the things that the Workforce Investment Board for the city has done, has taken a sector approach. So not just thinking about jobs out there in this nebulous world, but, you know, what is growing, what is emerging, what is sustainable? And not necessarily the industries that are growing, but within those, those occupations that are growing. So, again, I would like to see this committee continue that work, and also think about how we can incentivize businesses to do some local hiring, to work with your own workforce systems, to work with the one-stops, to say, you know, we want to open this business, or we want, you know, as part of an incentive, that's terrific, but we want to see that you directly tie to the work source center as you bring up new employees or get additional training for your, you know, incumbent workers. Because that's federal dollars, it's not city dollars. That can actually be used to help build our businesses. With the idea that families also need to understand how to use the money that they're making once they do have a job, we'd also would encourage incentives for businesses who offer auto-enrollment, automatic enrollment of 401Ks, so that families can start understanding, you know, that that's something that they can be doing, especially even at the lowest levels. So we would think that that would be something you might want to consider, that you might not have thought of before.
No, I want them to be able to access our pension system.
Yeah, that would be great.
Why not?
Right. And nonprofits, too.
No, anybody that lives in Los Angeles, why not? We're, we're writing a motion right now-
Right.
-to explore that. I don't understand why it's, why we've created a special society that can access the pension system, and we have a great pension system that pays tremendous benefits. And if companies and employee, and their employees want to participate in it, it can only enhance our, our opportunities, employees. So those kinds of exchange of benefits can solidify the future of, of families, and, and that's, we have to be thinking in new models, because it's just not happening. I do want to point out, this, this handout you gave me, I really, I glanced at it, and I'm enjoying it, because you, you hit on some, some very critical things that, that actually branch to so many subject areas that affect the economic well-being of the underclass in Los Angeles, if you will, the 1 million or so people that are below the poverty level, the true poverty level, not the federal government's poverty level. You talk about building savings, you talk about sustaining assets and gaining assets. We have created a rental society in Los Angeles. Over 70% of the people in Los Angeles are living in rented facilities, which means they do not have the collateral to access the credit that they need to sustain their lives in a, in a quality-of-life fashion. Without that, we will not be able to create a society that changes significantly. But we also know that we have banks where there's money, and, and where we have issues with financial literacy, we don't have banks. Maybe that makes sense, but, but it's not a good way to live. So we need to create incentives to get banks into communities that are, are not well-banked. We have over a million people in Los Angeles that, I think 300,000 people who do not have bank accounts who should. And, and there are communities that do not have financial institutions, or they have financial institutions that are taking huge amounts of interest for quick check-cashing programs, which they need. On the other hand, they have no other alternative, or don't have enough alternatives, or don't understand the alternatives. And, and that's a very critical part of the solution. So I really appreciate this, I don't know what it is, to tell you the truth, but I really appreciate this little graph, because it seems to touch on so many things.
We're trying to make it easy to understand. And this is a bank health program-
Again, I want to mention the word incentives-
Right.
-and we need to create the incentives for these things to happen. So if we, you know, offer, you know, $20 million, if a bank will locate, $20 million of our deposits for a bank to locate in South Central, it might be well worth the investment.
East LA.
Or East LA, or Pacoima.
Right.
I wanted to stay out of my district, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Pacoima actually did a study, and I think that was really terrific, and while Wells Fargo actually did come in and showed that they can be profitable. So it's not just, it's, it's profitable for a bank to go there, so I agree, absolutely. We are also in the midst of creating our Financial Literacy Council in conjunction with the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco. It is being headed by Wells Fargo and United Way, as well as City. And we are trying to bring together more of the people who are interested in financial education, junior achievement, community-based organizations.
Financial literacy should be a requirement for diploma from high school.
Yes.
We do not do enough to teach our kids how to manage a checking account, how to, what a loan is, what interest rates are, how to invest, you know, maybe a little bit in some of the business courses, but it's not required.
Right.
So we're, we're basically creating a society that is ill-informed to engage in the, in the financial systems that, that are required for an average lifestyle. And, and so we, we reap the, the benefits or the, or the lack of benefits as a result of that. And so I, I know that you've done a lot of work in these areas, and I, you meaning the United Way and you personally, but I just want to say that, that we, we will probably rely on a lot of the information that you've drummed up over the years to document some of the, or support some of the programs that we will be recommending out of this committee.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Film is, Film LA has been added to this committee. It's a sort of a new feature. Bad pun. A new element of this committee, and I'm looking forward to it, because I was chair of the Public Works Committee when we created the Entertainment Industry Development Council that went through the Public Works Committee. That's now been reassigned to this committee, and I'm looking forward to working with Film LA to find how, find out the best ways to stimulate growth in the filming industry in Los Angeles, and doing it in a way that is community-friendly and, and most profitable and beneficial to all the people of Los Angeles. So let me ask Paul Adley, for the President of Film LA, Melissa Patac, the Vice President of State Government Affairs, Motion Picture Association of America, and, excuse me, Ed Duffy, a business agent for the location managers, Teamsters Local 399. Paul?
It is really about that issue, about jobs in the economy in Los Angeles. What we do in facilitating that work makes that possible and perhaps easier, but really, by default, Film LA also serves in many ways as a film commission in gathering information, providing education, advocating both for neighborhoods, the industry, and the governments we serve. And so I think it's going to be enjoyable for us as well to be here and to be working with this committee on some of the issues that we see and the information we can bring to you about what's going on in the industry and how it relates to the city's work. One of the things that we certainly see as an issue, and some of the things that will be brought up, the Film Task Force, I think, was a very good step forward in helping to sort of unify and coordinate the message and the information gathering. We're very hopeful that that will produce some solid results as it goes forward. Some of the things brought to that were ideas like New York City's matching at 5%, the state of California's film incentive, fee controls. We hear frequently about other cities and other jurisdictions that don't charge for services, and while the city of Los Angeles today is providing a free venue for filming in City Hall and does that, does not charge facility fees for use of those, we do hear frequently about the cost of doing business with the city by comparison to others, and I know that will be looked at as well. And they're tackling that very difficult issue. I think the key that we see really is understanding the, kind of getting a mantra together that filming is jobs. To that end, Film LA is helping to coordinate an upcoming public service campaign, which we would like to bring to this committee for its review, which will basically be talking about the impacts that filming has on the employment. A television drama will spend $3 million an episode and is employing 250 to 300 people. They were fleeing the state. Television sitcoms, at a million and a half, and 100, 125 people were leaving, and certainly the large feature films, which can spend hundreds of millions of dollars. We recently are working with a feature film that is going to be doing most of its filming here. They'll be here about six weeks and spend $55 million over six weeks. That kind of economic return could be huge for the state of California and the city of Los Angeles, if at the state level those incentives truly become competitive. And for, because this industry is so mobile and so easily moved from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, they could be the leader of changing the current economic situations in California and Los Angeles, if given the reasons to stay here in film. We also see some opportunities to serve the city better going forward. As you know, an RFP process was just concluded. It took nearly three years for the city to get to the point that it was ready to renegotiate an ongoing contract with Film LA. We were the only respondents to that RFP. That contract will come forward, and we'll propose opportunities to do more in service, especially as the city struggles with staffing levels, including ideas like providing the posting of film parking, and other things that are currently being, under struggles with the departments to meet their current needs and the staffing that they have available. And we're here to serve the city in our balancing act, with the city as a client, the industry as our customers, and the neighborhoods as our constituents.
What are the key issues facing Film LA right now?
Well, the key issue for us really right now is getting our contract completed with the city, and understanding how we'll be going forward.
I assume that's coming through this committee?
I would assume that since you have jurisdiction, it will.
Yeah.
It's not yet begun, the process hasn't begun, I don't think an official announcement.
When is your contract over?
We have an extension through the end of this year. This is, we've been running extensions back-to-back, and the RFP process concluded. We haven't been officially notified that we have, in fact, won the competition.
It's a competitive RFP.
Well, if I could add, just, right, just on this issue, this is, because this is an important issue. You'll remember the old EIDC, the forerunner to Film LA, when it had its problems a number of years ago. There was a sense from some within the city family that when that was created, it was created as a sole-source entity, and that may have been part of what, you know, what caused its problems, or led to things that caused, you know, had problems, financial irregularities. So there has been an effort on to do a competitive bid situation, and that's been run through the CAO's office, and it's been, frankly, for the film industry, a very frustrating process, because while Film LA has gone, you know, been the contractor, they've only gotten very short contract extensions, very hard to improve your infrastructure, when you don't know if you're going to have your contract with the city. So we're at a point now where we've gone through a lot of that. It's now in the CAO's office to award the contract. We understand that Film LA is the only bidder, so we need to expedite the process, get the contract awarded to Film LA, let's negotiate the contract, have the city enter it, and then let's move on, because it is a sort of bureaucratic distraction for Film LA and for the film industry, to have to go through these, you know, meetings after meeting after meeting with the CAO's office about an issue that we all know, you know, what the four corners of the page are about.
Well, I think...
That's something we would look to you for help.
We do want to prioritize this. First of all, I personally disagree with the fundamental premise that the purpose of being a sole-source provider created the problems. It wasn't, it wasn't the system, it was the individual.
Right, I don't disagree with you.
Who made, who made some egregious mistakes, but, and we probably should have put some mechanisms into better monitor the possibility for those mistakes, but you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. And so I disagree with that fundamental premise. But I think in the context of the RFP process, as long as we expedite it, and did not make it a bureaucratic, belabored, social event for the city of Los Angeles, then, then we can live within that context. But I, for one, do not buy that premise. It's what we got, so let's, let me, I'll delve into it much more deeply, and once I get a better handle of it, then I'll be able to make other recommendations. But as far as I'm concerned, nobody else, there's no other, there's no other entity like Film LA, so I don't know, I don't know how anybody could compete. It's...
Well, and the reality...
Are there other applicants?
We also had an open competitive bid this year with LAUSD, we're the only respondents to that bid as well.
No, there's some of the, there are intermediary companies called permit service companies that sometimes help expedite the permit with Film LA. Some of them thought at one point in this process that they were qualified...
But this isn't a permit service thing.
No, no, no.
I mean, this whole thing started, we got one guy in Public Works who was a problem, and we came up with a system to...
Right.
Create an arms length.
To privatize, yeah, essentially privatize, right, right, right.
But, so my goal will be to make sure that there's no gap in your contract, first of all, and secondly, that, or in the contract, I should say. And secondly, that we expedite my understanding of where we are in the process, and try to crank it out. So I want, I do want to probably put this on one of our first agendas.
Okay.
In terms of the contract.
Right.
Okay. Okay, other, other issues.
I think we're pretty, in very good shape as far as the services that are being provided. We have, we adjusted our staffing as the industry began to withdraw from the state and the economy took a toll. We're keeping up and then some with that work. We're working very well with the Contract Services Section of LAPD, which opened, and our relationship with them, as you know, is they are the permit authority. They now have several people assigned to actually helping not only review, but even today, as an example, we had a...
That issue hasn't died yet?
No.
What contracts...
Different thing.
Contract Service Section, you're thinking about the supplemental police services. Right. They, they have created, LAPD has created a Contract Service Section, but it hasn't, because the council hasn't given it authority to receive private sector monies. So we still use our retired officers, and so that, that's okay for now. But there still is this Contract Service Section internally, which has, among other things, in addition, I think, to looking at First Amendment permit, you know, parades and things like that, they do look at the film permits, and they are the ultimate issuer on behalf of the city of the film permit. They give it to Film LA.
It's a separate discussion from the Motion Picture Officers' Work Permits, which Film LA is not involved with.
Why is that a police function, as opposed to a city policy function, a marketing function?
The which?
The issuance of the permit?
The permit.
The film permit?
Yeah.
The film permit...
It's a public safety issue?
The, the city, in deciding who would be the permit authority, delegated that by its ordinance to the LAPD. So as a public safety issue for making sure that all of the different things, transportation, traffic, safety, fire, have all been coordinated, they're the final reviewer of the permit as coordinated by Film LA, and that's the way it's working. The other, the other part of what they're doing for us at Film LA is that really, for the first time, even under EIDC, there was no one to call when things went wrong, because if you called the district office of the police department, the guys didn't know what they could or couldn't do. Today, we had a situation where a business owner was trying to force a film company to pay to use city property. It's happened before. Today, we were able to send out a Los Angeles police officer.
Who was trying to force, who?
A business owner was trying to force...
A private business owner was trying to charge for city property?
Yes, which happens a lot.
Really?
A lot, an alley, yeah.
Yeah, the sidewalk in front of his building, or the alley behind his store, that happens, right, yeah.
In the past, there was nobody to go to. Well, this, the group that's been assigned to work on filming at LAPD now has people who've been trained, have gone through the process, and were able to go out and explain to the business owner that he didn't actually own the alley.
You don't own the sidewalk.
Right, or the alley.
Or the alley.
And to take care of the problem. It didn't used to happen, and it was, became very difficult, and it's part of what you heard referred to as...
But mentioning the other issue, did you're satisfied with that process?
Yes.
The other issue with regard, with the security, has that gone away?
No.
Has that moved to New York?
You have to talk to them on that one.
Right, it's only gone away because there's some transition now at LAPD. I mean, we're not...
We're not quite sure who's negotiating that situation now.
Right, now, Chief Bratton had written a letter to the retired officers in June, indicating that as of September 21st, they could no longer wear the uniform. We raised some objections to that. Councilmember Greg Smith introduced a motion to sort of change all that around, and then LAPD, on the basis of that motion, said, "We'll take a step back, we'll rescind the September 21st date, and we'll try to work it out." And then, three days later, Chief Bratton announced that he was leaving, so we think that sort of shifted to the back burner with LAPD. But it's still, it's a pending issue, but they're not, I don't think there's any, anybody within LAPD now that wants to tackle that issue with us, frankly.
So...
So the officers are in their uniforms, and it's status quo.
They're still in their uniform.
Yes.
I just saw one today in front of us.
Yeah, that hasn't changed, right, and they will be for the foreseeable future.
But nobody's enforcing anything, you know?
Well, no, no, enforcing permits, you mean, different...
The policy, that nobody's enforcing the...
The change in uniform?
Well, they withdrew it.
It got withdrawn.
He withdrew it.
It's been on hold.
Oh, it was withdrawn?
Yes, it was withdrawn.
Oh, so we're...
So we're in status quo right now, right, right.
They want to negotiate it again with the, with retired officers. When they get to that, we don't know. We've been waiting for that.
Yeah, we think it'll probably be under new leadership.
Okay, well, that's something that we want to be definitive of.
Right, and we appreciate your help in the council.
We're meeting in the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll be doing a lot of work, priority, getting the contract out, and...
There's actually a Film Issues Meeting that's tentatively scheduled for September 22nd, so that may be a...
Oh, yeah, okay.
This committee meeting, right.
Right.
We've scheduled that meeting for September 22nd.
Is that two, will that be 2:00, same time?
1:00.
Yes, I believe so.
1:00?
1:00.
Okay.
1:00.
Well, one of the things that, one of the documents in here, I want to say, I'll say this for the next speaker, let me go on to Melissa.
Okay, well, we've covered, thank you, first of all, Mr. Chairman, Melissa Patack, for the Motion Picture Association of America, we're the trade association for the six major studios based here in the Los Angeles area. We thank you for your leadership in this new committee chairman assignment, and we're looking forward to working with you. We've touched on a couple of the issues, but let me just, I'll say it again, some of the, some I'll be a little repetitive, but I do want to say that earlier this year, in February, the CLA's office, at the request of council, issued a report. I think John Wickham was the principal author, but it was a great report. It was precipitated by the decision of one company to take a one-hour drama, The Ugly Betty Show, which airs on ABC, to New York, a couple of years, a year, more than a year ago. And that got a number of your colleagues' attention, and there was motions, and then this was the report that the CLA's office did for the, for the council, and it really highlights some of the low costs. We know that the city's in a difficult financial situation, and there's not going to be a tax incentive from the city to accompany the state incentive. But there are things, and this report identifies some of those things, that the city could be doing in an improved way to make it a little more film-friendly. One of those issues is parking. We would love to identify places in the city, city-owned property, or other spaces that the, you know, city officials may know about, where our industry could use for the crew to park their cars, or could be used as base camp. That gets the cars off the streets, and that is one of the irritants for neighbors, neighborhoods, about having cars parked and no parking on your street because the film crews are coming in, or trucks. So that, that's mentioned in this report, and we look forward to the city moving forward on that. We think your oversight and kind of moving that forward would be very helpful. The second item is...
Have we ever seen, maybe John knows this, but have we ever seen a report that specifically focuses on potential sites for parking in the city?
John Wickham with the CLA's office, we're actually working on that kind of a report. The council created a downtown film parking task force to work on downtown issues, which is where the biggest problem has been focused, and we'll see how this works, and then we can transfer that to other communities, Hollywood, maybe, or some other communities. But the committee will look at those issues, where are the parks?
Not done until you get to CD7.
So, yeah, but those are the kinds of things we're working on.
I'm not kidding, John, and I'm not going to be around a long time, so we got to expedite how to make this a citywide endeavor. My reference to CD7, meaning the place in the city of Los Angeles where we have the fewest film shoots in the city. And the chair does not like being, being, having that as part of my resume entering into this committee. And I think if you, clearly, there's a need downtown, I mean, no question, but, but I believe we're also avoiding opportunities by not doing more research in some of the outer-line areas, where, where they may be getting short-tripped, or maybe there's just not the energy behind it.
I think it may be a perspective issue as well. Right now, the focus is on the areas where the conflict is an issue, as opposed to looking at...
There's conflict, there's going to be conflict in parking, no matter where you go.
Looking at the opportunities that are...
You're looking at it backwards.
Exactly, it's the opportunities.
It's because that's where the highest filming is. And so if you had, if you had a higher film in the 7th Council District, you'd have more complaints about parking. So that's not, the question is, citywide, we need to identify parking locations, and it doesn't seem to be that much of a task. In fact, it's probably more difficult downtown than anywhere else. So I'm thinking we may be avoiding a lot of opportunities by focusing on the most difficult problem. And we got to change our thinking about how we do this. Maybe we come at it from the outside in, and, I mean, look at shuttles and things like that, that have to be done. Anyway, I'm just saying that that is one, something I do want to explore.
And related to that is unused city property throughout the city, not only downtown, there may be parking areas, but there also may be vacant buildings.
There's absolutely no reason why you shouldn't be able to park under DWP lines.
Right.
Up and down the city of Los Angeles, on a temporary basis, you know?
Right.
It would be nice.
Yeah.
There was a film shoot in, I'm thinking, that I saw a film crew in the Shadow Hills area, and they're parked all over the streets, and there's this huge DWP dirt lot, it had to be like 10 acres, where nobody was parked.
Unused, right.
It was, if they were there, they were kind of, it was not a good situation, but, but a lot of people were parked on the street, when they could have just simply parked under...
Right, and that's our point, and we become less, less, you know, obtrusive, you know, and, and, less of an inconvenience, right, to the neighbors.
I believe, on any given day, under DWP lines, there are tens of thousands of parking spaces accessible without having to put one stripe of paint, or one, one foot of asphalt. Because... Because film crews don't care, they just park on the dirt and go to work.
Exactly, right, so. So, and, and related to that would be unused properties, whether they're vacant buildings that the city owns, it's places where, like you point out, whether it's in CD7 or other unused, or less-used neighborhoods that we could move, everybody comes.
Like if I have a location next to a MetroLink, maybe, maybe the distance doesn't matter so much if.
People can take subway there, right, right.
To get to the subway.
And, and some of the things that we've seen, that we've been asked about, for instance, when new Rampart opened and old Rampart was left fully furnished, it really didn't become available to filming. Film LA has, in past times, been sort of a manager of these facilities for the city, Lincoln Heights Jail and others, and been able to bring in funds from those industries to maintain and improve the buildings during that time, and, and we remain available and have remained available to do that, it hasn't happened.
Okay.
Let me tell you, we negotiated with the federal government with, in the years that all the bases were closing, we had a number of conversations with the, you know, Navy, with the Army, to talk about interim use. I mean, ultimately, the government wants to sell off those, you know, unused bases to private real estate interests, but in the meantime, it could be used for filming. The same can be true of unused city property renovate, that's laying idle. So we would welcome that. Also, out of the Ugly Betty motion in the report, is a, a film task force, which Paul mentioned, which is an interdepartmental task force that has met three times now, various departments with film industry stakeholders for an exchange of ideas and identifying problems and possible solutions. It's productive, it's really. It's really the first time that we've had the city, you know, entire city family really committed to meeting with the film industry on a regular basis. We're very encouraged by it, but again, it's follow-up. So if you, if you meet, at one time, one meeting, the DOT came in, the general manager came in, it was terrific, we had her undivided attention, identified a handful of things, but what's the timetable for, for implementation, for the, the, the issues that, that have been identified? So we would welcome your oversight on follow-through and timetables and implementation, and we know there's scarce resources. You know, years ago, there were probably 12 people at the DOT.
That's exactly why you need.
Right.
Coordination and strategy.
Exactly right, to, to maximize the scarce resources. And we know there aren't 12 people at DOT who can sit and process lane closures and street closures, but if you only have one person part-time now, then we have to make that person be really efficient, and, and really dedicated to, to, to these efforts and to issuing, getting the permits processed. So those are some of the things. Also, just, I'll highlight a couple of other issues. Most of city property is free for, for filming, no rental charge. There are some properties that still do charge, Parks and Rec being one of them. We understand it's about resources, and to pay a reasonable use fee, the industry doesn't object, but reasonable is being the operative word. Parks and Rec was one of those departments that met in the film task force, and we continue to have issues with Parks and Rec about the reasonableness and the, you know, of fees.
So we don't, we don't have a one consistent.
No.
No.
With the, the fees at the park, or we.
Anywhere.
The, the basic policy in city facilities, in particular under General Services, is free. Parks charges, and they charge for staffing and many other things as well, and they set those fees. And they vary.
Well, you know.
Well, the council allowed them to, at some point in the past, not to be part of that free, free.
Okay, that may be something I want to, I certainly want to inquire about it, I don't understand why they have a different policy.
So, we've touched on the RFP, I won't repeat what's, what we've already said. The last thing I just would mention to you, it probably really is more of jurisdiction of public safety, but I just want to mention the piracy issue. Counterfeiting of DVDs and, and other goods is really the underground economy, and to the extent you're focused on jobs, which is, you know, the, the purpose of this committee, we want to work with public safety, you know, with you, on kind of bearing down on this underground economy, which legitimizes, you know, knockoff goods. Those are jobs that, they're not paying good wages, they're not paying taxes, they're taking away from the legitimate store owners and, and creating legitimate jobs. And so, the city needs to focus on bearing down on, on piracy and counterfeit goods. And I don't think there's, we, we got a new law passed this year called nuisance abatement, which would allow the city attorney, after appropriate notices to a property owner, to abate that property as they would for prostitution or drug trafficking if it's being used for counterfeit goods, and we need to have a, some examples made of some property in Los Angeles.
The state has a film commission.
Yes.
Do you think it's time for LA to have a film commission?
Well, I mean, we have, you know, it, I don't know that, what would, it depends on what its mission is, is defined as. We don't, I don't think we need another agency or department or anything like that. We need, you know, we think there are dedicated civil servants who want to, you know, help the film industry in the various departments. Other jurisdictions that have film commissions, those film commissions also do the permitting. So they have a dual function. We have Film LA that, that does the permitting and can really be the, you know, the, the convener of industry interests, stakeholders, and, and the city's interests, and, and kind of pull it all together. I'm not sure we need a film commission per se. We're open to discussion on that, but I, I think the model at the state of California and other jurisdictions is slightly different, because those entities usually also do what, what Film LA does, which is issue, you know, expedite and issue the permits, so.
Well, I think the primary function of a film commission would be to market the industry and, and to promote it, and, you know, be chief cheerleader. Now, that's a function that you have, but you're a private entity, a film commission has a, it, it sort of connects the public to the industry, because it's a government entity, and although you're quasi-government, it's a stretch, but, and maybe they work cooperatively, I mean, they should work cooperatively, they should be one and the same, but I just think, for example, this committee, while I can look at it, I won't have the constant focus on it that a commission would. I mean, their entire purpose would be to expand that, that, the film industry, and particularly those that provide economic benefits to Los Angeles as a whole. So that's one idea that, that I float, and, but I do respect your hesitation, and, and we want to ferret out, if we did something like that, how, how would we make it most effective? And, okay, have we done a report on neighborhood filming guidelines?
A report on it?
You mean the, how many of them are there?
Yeah, I'll tell you, look, as a council member, what, what I need is something I can, here, read this, you know, to give to all the neighborhood council presidents, and say, "Could you please let your constituents know that this is how filming works in LA?" To give it to teachers, that, so they can teach their kids. When you see somebody jumping out of a burning helicopter on the end of a crane, dangling from a crane, it's probably a film shoot, and that's what's going on, and this is, and these are the economic benefits of it, you know? So, I, I would like to, to work on perhaps developing neighborhood filming guidelines, so that, so they understand what the fight is about.
You mean, you don't pay so much the restrictions or guidelines, you mean something to tell them why we're doing what we do, and what the.
It's sort of, it's something that gives them a, a, a better understanding of, of what is expected when a film shoot comes to your neighborhood.
Right.
What are the, what's the dynamics? Why is it there? How to work with it? What benefits you're getting from it? What to watch out for, you know?
A little, a little Wikipedia.
Kudakaw.
Right, a little, yeah, a little Wikipedia on filming, or something like that.
Yeah, you get your, call Richard O'Conner, call Film LA.
Right.
They'll explain it to you. Those kinds of things, a, a simple brochure of some kind, I think that would be very helpful. And what about websites? Have we, have we entered into using the web for, well, I'm sure we have some kind of web.
We do, Film LA provides for the city and its other clients, a website that tells people how, it, it has several components. One is, for filmmakers, how to go through the process, what all the things they need to do, copies of all the forms. For communities, it goes through and it tells them, and it includes specific neighborhoods that do have written guidelines as well, but it also tells people in general about it. We have a, an ability to expand that on your behalf. It is maintained and paid for by Film LA, and also is the web base for the online permitting system. There is no longer a need for any paper in the permit process, as the city agencies receive electronically, respond electronically, and we can actually transmit to a BlackBerry or an iPhone that permit in the field. So, we have both, it's filmla.com.
Does it have parking locations?
It has no parking locations.
Okay, we have work to do.
And it has no location information. In other words, a great feature might be some locations, and maybe where movies in the past have filmed there.
We do have, and actually, we're, we're completely overhauling right now what was
there, was maintained by an outside vendor, we're taking it in-house, it's going to be LocoScout, but right now, we're limited to client jurisdiction facilities, not private facilities, because location managers and location property managers have their own websites with those private properties, like Maguire for downtown buildings and others. And so, we're focusing on city properties, county properties, school districts that we represent, and putting those in to our location scout.
But there's no reason why we couldn't reference Maguire and.
Oh, we do, but links will be there for private, but we don't think, because we don't control any of that information, or how to do it, or the viability of that information, we'll be linking to those outside resources for private.
Yeah, so many people, I, over the years, I've heard so many people say, "How did they get that film in their house?", you know, or "How did?"
It's one of the most common questions we get, too.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there's, I'm sure there's a very simple answer, I don't know it, but.
Well, it, it has a lot to do with location managers, it has a lot to do with what you're looking for, it has to do with what the size of their house looks like inside, has to do about how they marketed their house, about where it is on the street, is it near parking? Is it near an area that we can actually work? Are there too many trees out front?
Are there palm trees?
So you can identify the house. A lot of times, you'll drive down a street and you'll, you'll see 30 houses, and only two of them, you can actually see the house, because the way they've let their house be overgrown, the way they, there's a lot of things with where the door is, the door might be on the side instead of the front. I mean, there's all these little things that plan to.
Well, jump right in.
Okay.
Ed, jump right in, you're, you're.
I'm, I'm a, the business agent with the Teamsters. I, I represent the location managers, the casting directors, and the drivers. I was location manager for 30 years before I took this job. Basically, I wrote something out, but I'm not going to read it, I'm going to read it and sort of paraphrase it, but, you know, currently, approximately 40% of our members that are usually working this time of year are unemployed because of the, the runaway production. And the chances of that changing, even with the incentives that are going on right now, are very slim. As an example, Fox Television, the five new hours of drama television they're, they're doing this year, they're all doing out of the state, either in Atlanta, New York, Canada. One was being, or one is being done in Texas. Besides the incentive problem, or the, the states having these other incentives, one of the big issues is downtown. Filming in downtown, the cost of filming in downtown has skyrocketed. When I was doing this two or three years ago, a day in downtown from a location perspective was about $30,000. Any, right about now, it's anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000 to film downtown for one day. Shows like.
What, what charge, how do you, what?
That's location site rental, people you have to pay because they're happened to be a block away, you need to get their signature in order to film late, storefronts, parking, all those things, obviously permits, and fire, police, but that, that all adds up to that amount. It's become a real issue, especially for, you know, we only have one downtown. These, these companies are going to New York and Chicago and Boston and shooting there, and it's easier and cheaper for them to shoot in those, in that jurisdiction right now than it is to shoot here. And that's ridiculous.
Even when the story's about LA?
Even when the story's about, about LA, there is, there are two shows shooting right now in, in Vancouver that are about Los Angeles. There's a show, there's a movie right now called.
LA is not Vancouver.
That's right.
We know that.
That's, that's what they're shooting it for. It used to be the other way around. Everybody would come here to shoot any other city in the world, but now, that, that's all changed. They can go to that city, or they can create that city. There's actually a movie shooting in Louisiana that's called something Los Angeles, it's called Destruction of Los Angeles or something. They're actually shooting the entire movie in Louisiana and building the Santa Monica Pier, and to film all of Los Angeles there, rather than come here and shoot it, a $35 million picture. It's, it's, it's devastating to all of us. The, there, let's see, I don't know if that's what I was going to say. The, the state has provided a window opportunity with tax incentives. Obviously, we have the, the, the new task force that's being discussed, but again, as Melissa said, we, we discuss these things, but then, I don't know where they're going. I mean, every, all three of these meetings, we've had discussions about things that affect location managers. We're there, we're telling DOT issues that we're having, nothing's really being talked about any changes, they're all just responding with a head shake and saying, "We'll look into it." It's, right now, we need things done, things are leaving very quickly. There's no time to wait, we can't wait months to figure things out, and it's, it's just been an ongoing thing. For instance, it's almost impossible to film at the Observatory, this is an LA icon. You can't, you couldn't touch it for under $65,000 a day a year ago. Now it's about.
Double without a cot.
Well, of course, a multitude of movies and television shows shot there. They're, why? Why is that a problem? The LA Zoo, I had a show that they wouldn't allow, the zoo would not allow them to shoot there, they ended up going to San Diego and shooting the zoo there. I, it's, it's the Hollywood sign, it's, it's an icon, it costs $10,000 to shoot it, because it's run by a company. It's, these are things that, you know, we, we're amazed as location managers, we turn around every day, and we look, we send emails to one another.
Who owns the Hollywood sign?
Well, I'm not sure who owns it now.
The Hollywood sign is maintained by a conservancy, and the Hollywood Chamber has the rights to it for copyright and for use, and it's on park property. So you end up permitting all three.
Now, what would the Hollywood Chamber testify before this committee?
That they're royalty.
We should incentivize filming.
I mean, it's an amazing expense.
Except for the, except for the sign, right?
Yeah, it's a.
I mean, the other thing is, is that, and the biggest thing for me is.
Talk is cheap.
Is that the city agencies and, and most, all over Los Angeles, it's just been an ongoing thing, you never hear anybody say, "Oh, let's work on that," or "Let's try and do that," in any city agency, "We can do that," or "We, let's look into that." It's always, "No, we can't," or.
Are there, are there, how many locations, I mean, if, if it's going to be in, inside somebody's kitchen, I mean, in a residence, not, not a problem, you'd figure that out a million in two different ways. But how many choice locations would you say there are that, that are just repetitively used?
Quite a few, I mean, I would say there's.
There would be if, if it were easy.
There's probably 50 or 100, but.
But it's, but it's, it's a graspable number.
Right.
And, and do, and if we were to analyze just that group, and break down what the inhibitions are, what the barriers are, has anybody ever done a report that lists?
I doubt it. I mean, I, I think that we could all come together and come up with the ideas of how much everything is and why, you know, what the particulars are in each thing, but nobody's ever done it individually, or as a group, as a report.
If, if that might be helpful, it seems like something that we might be able to work with you on, and then knock them off, one, one by one. Bring them, bring them before the LA Chamber of Commerce. Why do you, why does your organization contribute to runaway production?
You mentioned Maguire Properties, which is an unusual one.
No, I didn't, he did.
Okay, well, anyway, they have something called an injunctive relief clause in their contract. Four studios can't shoot at any of those buildings in Los Angeles, because their injunctive release is that if they don't like something that they've agreed to, or if something's different, they demand the film. It isn't there's a monetary demand, they will, they will, they will, they will demand that the film not be shown. That's what's in their contract, that no, none of these companies can shoot those buildings.
Okay, you're saying that if, if they don't like how it came out?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. They have in their contract that they can put a hold on that film.
They have, as an example, a sensitivity to anything that shows destruction of their property on film?
Well, I, I kind of got to sense that's what, that's what the issue was, but...
But the point is, if they have an issue, it would, it could be a hundred thousand dollars, it could be two hundred thousand dollars. The money is not the issue. Lawyers aren't going to, are looking at that going, if they're doing a hundred million dollar picture and they can't pay to make something happen, or to take care of something, or at least figure out a way to solve the problem, they can't give up their film. So, so that creates a situation in downtown Los Angeles where these companies have to shoot the same buildings over and over again, which creates a problem for the neighborhoods, which creates other problems that trickle down a problem, where you can't spread out where you're working because the other buildings won't let you shoot there. And it's because of, they'll let you shoot there, but you have to sign that clause. I mean, those are the, those little things happen quite often that create the situations. That's why some neighborhoods get, get burned out, because it's the, that one place that you can shoot.
So, so the, the people that would be most affected by that are not necessarily large film productions?
Well, they would be.
Any film.
But they, but it has nothing to do with the money. It has to do with the film.
No, it's, if your film, if there's a possibility that somebody can sue you and prevent you from releasing your film, you're not going to do business with that. In other words, you see a building downtown, you, "Oh, this will be great," and then it turns out it's, you know, Maguire Properties, they give you a contract, and in the contract it says, there's this catch-all clause, you know, "We'll, you know, we'll seek injunctive relief if, you know, whatever." The company's going to walk away and say, "Well, we can't risk spending fifty million, seventy-five million, and then the day before our movie's going to open, this company's going to sue us because they, the building window blew out?"
I'm not going to be able to, I'm not going to be able to do a million, a million of these things, or a hundred thousand locations. But if we take the top one hundred and start drilling down as to who, who is really the barrier, I think we're going to find, it's not just, it's not the LA City Government.
No, oftentimes...
We're eating ourselves.
Right.
You know, with our, our own community, people who, you know, in, in, in one forum would talk about, "We need to incentivize..."
Right.
"Incentivize, uh, film production as part of a general business plan." And then, the next minute are, are taking dollars from...
Or overreaching, or, you know.
Overreaching, in terms of taking, uh, resources from, from those companies. I could do that. I could do that.
I know.
Let's, let's, let's have a public discussion about who's, who's making it more difficult to film in LA. Because, you know, I, I think we, we've done some things to try and improve it, and I, and, you know, I don't think we've done enough on a state level.
You're right.
But, um, nor on a city level, as a government. But I also think there are other inhibitions that, that we, we can't control.
No, well, see, I think that's one of our problems.
We can certainly make a statement about.
Our problem is the culture of filming in Los Angeles has eroded so tremendously to the general public.
Maybe we can produce a report about, you know, why, on, on these particular things. These, these, these businesses, these sites are not accessible in, in a, in a way that, would be most beneficial to Los Angeles because of these, these inhibitions, or these barriers. So, um, I'm willing to, to explore that. I think, I think it's, it's that critical. There isn't, there, there's almost not a day that goes by when you leave your home that you don't run into some kind of filming activity. Or, I don't know too many people who aren't related to somebody who, who has a film credit. So, uh...
And Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you that the people who are in the industry are usually the ones complaining about their neighborhood being impacted as well.
Well, I've heard that before, and, because they know what to complain about, but, um, I don't fear an informed public as long as we, as long as we have Plan B and Plan C. That's why we created Film LA, but, um...
I, I feel that...
But that's exactly my point. You're, that's the worst case in it, when you have somebody who's actually reliant on the industry who complains about when it's somebody else, you know?
Yeah, it's just, you know, the, the biggest point is, is that the, the idea or the cultural filming in Los Angeles, the economic value to the neighborhoods, the economic value to the, the whole system is the thing that I think could use some more education for the, the residents of Los Angeles. I mean, somehow, explain to them why we're doing it, that it, it has to do with jobs, it has to do with, it's not some big mammoth company moving into your neighborhood. All these people are working and living in your neighborhood. They're all, they're all work around town. They all support all the same places you support or go to. And it's, it's something that you need to consider. It's not when you, when you're...
Yeah, and you know, my district doesn't have a whole lot of shoots. I think, I think it was last some out of fifteen.
We have to work on that.
That's the city way.
Oh, you will. I'm just kidding. But, but at the same time, we also are the base for the lighting industry, for the, the catering industry, for the, for the movie industry.
Vendors, so the other, other businesses, related businesses.
A lot of the vendors, the grip, grip, not the grips per se, but the...
The grip house, the...
The warehouses where they got their equipment.
The prop houses, right, the prop, yeah, right.
My father, who was in upholstery, most of his friends that he went to school with ended up in the studios. And, uh, you know, but people, people just, I think they have to gain a better appreciation for, for how it impacts. And it's very exciting, and, and most people enjoy working for, for the film industry, but we have to expand it.
Anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're going to have to say a lot more than that, but not, not today.
I don't have much more to say.
We don't have to blow our wad all in one day. We, we, as I said, we want to drill down, want to work on. I want to get to what your top problems are, and if, and see if there are ways that we can resolve them with joint efforts. So, thank you all for being here. I didn't want to focus the entire meeting on, on the film industry, which is obviously, but, but it is, it is an important addition to the committee, in addition to all the other categories, the tax relief, the jobs, you know, um... I'm getting a, a stream of thought that really isn't, isn't the right stream for this meeting, but, anyway, so we will, we'll, we're going to, I just want you to know, we're going to focus on this issue. And, um, I, I consider this committee a partner with all of you, and, uh, we want to incentivize, we want to quickly adjust to deal with the reality of today's economy. The faster we do that, the faster we can, we can grow it. And, you know, the industry's going to be a critical component of Los Angeles' funeral future. What, I almost said funeral. I meant to say future.
Future, right, future, recovery, future, right, right, right.
Okay, so with that, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We covered all of the, okay, we can go on to item number two, I think.
Item number two is a chief legislative analyst's report who will be providing a summary and overview of matters pending before the Jobs and Business Development Committee. And basically, that's, I will be present, yes. And by the way, I'm Felipe Chavez, I'm with the CLA's office.
Hey, Felipe. Are you, are you going to be the ongoing?
I'm going to be one of the analysts assigned to this.
There's two analysts.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So I will be one of them.
Okay, good.
We basically, what we did was, we put a, a chart together of all the items that are pending before the Jobs Committee. It's based on the City Clerk's chart, and there are currently thirty-three items that are pending. And we anticipate that other items will be referred to the committee as well now that there, there's a new committee. What I'm going to do is go through each item and read the description of each one of the items, and you let me know if you have any questions. And we also have John Wickham here from our office who may be able to answer some of the questions. Number one is a motion to reestablish the Business Tax Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Number two is a City Clerk report relative to the Highland Park bid 2009 fiscal year planning report, and that's actually item number three on today's agenda. Number three is a motion relative to banking district development program. Number four is a motion relative to the financial institutions foreclosure prevention efforts. Number five is an LA Minority Business Opportunity Committee grant application. Number six is a motion relative to city gross receipts tax, various business...
You know, we're not going to go through all...
Okay.
I hope I didn't give that impression. We're going to go through all thirty-three items. What I really want to get to is, the first thing I want to do is, is make sure we're not clogging up the system. What I, what I want to do is quickly go through the items that, not, not immediately, but what I really want to do is know which items we can get rid of that may have been pending a long time. I, I certainly don't want anything that's been in this committee too long not going anywhere that's just sort of dangling around. Do we have those items?
Uh, we have some of the items that can be scheduled in the, we, we can't take action on these items yet.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, um, how would I identify items that have been here a long time? Oh, there it is, oh eight.
We have, well, we have the council file.
Anything like oh seven, you got one oh six, local hiring ordinance. I mean, I, I just don't want old items lying around.
There, there's some, some of these items are, are pretty old, and all they need to do is be noted and filed or received and filed.
Right.
And they're just basically for informational purposes only.
Right.
But it's just a matter of going through them and identifying them for you.
The Northrop Grumman KC-45 tanker contract.
That could probably be received and filed.
Yeah. It's, it's 2008, I'm sure.
Yeah, that was a...
Whib funded positions from 2007 to 2008.
Right, that one.
Yeah, we, some of these things, that, you know, that's the first thing I like to do on the committee, just get rid of the stuff that...
Initially, councilman, items that have reached a two-year period, we have a process for automatic approval, so without even having, so a lot of them, we could take a look today.
Actually, I, I don't really, you mean, does that process include me?
What we do is, we, we distribute, no, not for the office, but no, but we distribute a list to council offices and all parties, committees, and essentially, you know, here it is, and go down, we, you know, and then they tell us if they want to save something, they schedule for committee, if they say, no, they don't care about it, then...
Yeah, I would, yeah, exactly. What I want to do is say, uh, this item has been in committee for, you know, two years and three months. It's my intention to receive and file the item, unless you give me justification for continuing it, and what's your, what's your desire, you know, basically.
And we're due to run our report, I believe, in September. We run it on a quarterly basis.
Oh, you do this in all committees?
For everything, yeah, tire, through tire inventory.
Otherwise, you'd be...
One of the reasons we initiated this approximately four years ago is literally we had no more physical space for these files, and for myself, I...
I was going to say, you're like the silo.
Yeah, I had things in my drawer dating back to the late sixties.
You, you, but you should say that you, you were not an employee at the time.
No, I, but I can work with CLA's office, helping, helping, drilling on...
Right. Yeah, and then I want to identify what we think some of the, the items that we'll focus a lot more attention on.
There are four items that I see right off the bat that have a business tax component to it in some of your early speakers.
The city of Los Angeles. Oh, okay. Yeah, there's quite a few things we can, we can move very quickly with receiving files. Now, some of these things say ready to be scheduled.
Those items that are ready to be scheduled are, are motions that are pending before the committee that have not been...
A report or something?
Some of them do have a report, and the chart indicates whether there's a CLA or CEO report, or a department report pending. And that there's also some that...
All right, so what, I don't want to put them all on one agenda.
No.
But, um, you know, I think what we did in, in my last committee was, we tried to get rid of five at a time. And, uh, you know, in a couple of months, we'll be, we'll be pretty honed in. What is the average, do, do we have any sense of how many items we, we normally should carry in this committee? It's, it's, it's an interesting committee. It's got a hodgepodge of things, and it's kind of hard to define, particularly with the new additions, but, um, do we have any sense of how many might...
Well, it really depends on how, how many items you want to put on the agendas. There's some committees that have up to fifteen, sixteen, twenty items, and there's some...
In, in the, in the bailiwick, not, not on the, not on any particular agenda, but how many, like, right now, we have thirty-three items, and if we go through the, if we whittle down, I would say there's maybe twenty that are, we actually have substance, if that.
At least, based on personal experience, if we were to, even at thirty-some items, it's pretty thin for a committee. I easily, my other committee, public works easily has a couple hundred items, various descriptions.
Yeah, but that's, they're dealing with sidewalk cracks and everything else. Here, we're dealing with quite a...
Larger policy issues.
Well, they're, they're meaty.
Yep.
They're very meaty subjects, and everything we have to get a little deeper on...
Right.
Is going to take a lot more research, so, but I want to know what those are, and, and then we can start defining our priorities.
Well, we can work with your office and also the City Clerk's office and, and go through each one of these and recommend which can definitely be received and filed, not filed, right?
I know, what, what are, really they want to fight for. Okay, and then, then we can also start designing our legislative agenda. Okay, so what, did you have anything else to add to your report?
No, it's time.
Well, yeah, I can, I guess I can announce what the, the proposed meeting schedule is. Very aggressive, September eighth, business taxes, September tenth, a special town hall meeting on consumer protection, September twenty-second, filming in Los Angeles, October thirteenth, public sector, city investment policies, October twenty-seventh, Los Angeles Economic Development Strategy, I'm not sure what that one is, November tenth, Master Plan to End Poverty in Los Angeles. What, when you go through the thirty-three items, you might want to plug them into the appropriate meeting.
Right.
And then some, you know, we can add a few items just to get rid of them on any one of these agendas.
Okay, we'll do that.
That should just give you a sense of what, what direction we're going in. I think we have five meetings in six weeks, and then we should get into a more regularized program. Okay, let's, let's move on to item number three, which, is that a consent item?
Yes, let me just read it, just for the record. Item number three is a City Clerk report relative to the Highland Park Business Improvement District, 2009 fiscal year annual planning report and related matters.
Honestly, I should go back to the public comment, I apologize. Skipped over. On item number one, we, I want to make sure we got everybody. Malcone, Kalina, Ed Duffy was here, Beverly, Kenworthy, Paul Oddly, Film LA, Melissa Patak, they all spoke. Margarita Womack, okay, so we have no public comments, so, so item number three is the Highland Park Business Improvement District. I propose that for consent, I, I...
The action should be to note and file.
Oh, really?
Note and file.
I think that's a wonderful action. I, I moved to note and file that, and I approve my own action, my own motion. So, a communication from the chair will be to note and file this item, and it'll be sent to committee in that way. Any other public comment?
The Highland Park annual planning report.
Pardon me?
The Highland Park annual planning report needs to be adopted by the Council.
Right, so it needs to be...
Okay.
Is that part of this?
Right, yeah, that's item number three.
Is that what I just did?
Yes.
Exactly, I knew that, that's exactly what I just did. Okay, well, very seriously, though, this committee has tremendous... Okay, well, very seriously, though, this committee has tremendous opportunities, but, but only if they're seized. That means we're gonna have to do a lot of work, but we owe it to the public. I believe that, that we can stimulate activity that will actually have a positive impact on creating jobs and improve the condition for business to stimulate new business development and enhance existing business, but also at the same time, be mindful of our needs to develop continuous revenue streams to operate our government function, but do it hopefully in a way that's, is better for Los Angeles. And then we have, we have, just internally in my office, we've come up with all kinds of, of innovative ideas that I hope, I hope they're not just innovative, I hope they are very positive in terms of how they're received and, and their impact. But we have to be very aggressive, and that's the intent of this committee, and that's why I wanted to meet today. Now that we have that orientation, I wanna say, thank you. Adam, you're gonna be, you're gonna be the guy on, on this committee. You got, you were stuck with me last time, you're stuck with me again, huh? Yeah, he says I am. And-
Felipe?
Felipe, it took me a whole, a whole two years to remember Adam, so just keep saying your name, and I will, I will catch up sooner or later, okay? But thank you all very much. Let's, let's try to, one, one problem we're gonna have, because we meet on, on one o'clock-
Tuesday.
On Tuesdays, and the councils have been running over consistently, so it's gonna be a challenge, but I will do everything I can to keep the meetings within an hour, except if they're a special meeting and we really wanna hone in on something. But that will be my goal. I think we can manage that with the number of items we have. Nothing's gonna get done necessarily in one meeting on one item. It may take several meetings to get the best out of any particular item, because these are so weighty. John, I do, I'm very knowledgeable of your work in this, and I appreciate your participation. We're gonna need you. So, thank you all very much, and this meeting is adjourned. Oh, well, uh-
I need to interrupt you, just to come to the clerk's attention. There are two specific things that have to be found on the Highland Park report. Item one, find that the attached annual planning report for the Highland Park Business Improvement Districts 2009 fiscal year applies the requirements of the LSPM PBID ordinance. Additionally, we need formally adopt the attached annual planning report for the Highland Park Business Improvement Districts 2009 fiscal year pursuant to the LSPM PBID ordinance.
Absolutely, isn't that what I said?
Actually, it was no file, and, and so this didn't, it was a little more specifically used, as you-
Okay, I'd like to rescind the previous action on item number three and replace it with the action recommended by Adam, and-
It will do several.
And that's a done deal. Okay, thank you.